Good evening, welcome to the Town of Dayton Monthly Board of Health Meeting. The date is Thursday, July 14th, 2022. This is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. I would like to call to order. Tonight, we'd like to introduce our newest member, Mrs. Charlene Bonifant. And she has a lot of experience bringing with her from the town of, uh, town, city?
City of Taunton.
Of Taunton, and we're thankful to have her. At this time, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to add the time of the beginning of the meeting at 6:03. First up is reorganizing the committee, which all the committees do as of July 1st. Do I hear any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Barbara.
Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Can I have a second on that?
I second that, Nicole Mello.
Okay, and can we have a vote?
Aye.
Yes. Aye.
No, I want to call you girls by your first name, and I vote aye. Motion passed, Barbara Katavias, Chairman. Can I have a motion on clerk?
Um, I nominate Charlene.
I also would step down and nominate Charlene. Um, can I have a vote on that, Mrs. Bonifant? Can you vote on yourself? I don't even know. Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and Mrs. Bonifant is nominated as clerk of the Board of Health. Committee business. First, we'd like to act on a certificate of recognition for Diana Shannon in her great job on contact tracing for COVID. Mrs. Mello, could you do the presentation on this since you did work with her quite a bit?
I know, and I don't have my notes from last time. I had such a good thing I said last time. Now I'm sad. Um, we want to recognize all the hard work you did with the, um, contact tracing. Um, we were over water at one point, you got us right to where we needed to be. You were so knowledgeable in every aspect. You barely had to reach out to me, I barely heard from you, you were self-sufficient, that's my favorite thing. So, we want to give you this, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is great, thank you all so much, awesome. We want to thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you sweetheart, this is a long table. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming back to get the certificate. Perfectly fine?
Oh yes, we love having you here.
This is how we get the public here, we just make it keep going.
Um, the next, review, discuss, and act on the designate authorized signatories for payroll and bills payable invoices. Basically, um, I do, well, the chairman does most of the signing for bills and pay, and this time, the hours of, are worked by the Board of Health. But when I'm not able to, I'd like to know how you two feel about having your names added, so you would be able to sign also?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Do you have a problem with that?
No.
No.
You, Mrs. Mello?
Was, is there any discussion in also having Todd as he is someone that would be somebody that's constantly here and...
That's the other thing, that he would be, so in case something needed to be go through real quick and he couldn't reach one of us.
You can designate more than one person.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
I was just gonna say, I make a motion to put the two of us and Todd, um, as the signatories.
Okay, and Todd?
I said that.
Oh, okay.
And Todd.
Yeah, so it would be, um, the three members of the board plus the inspector, Todd Pilling. Do you have to add his name on here?
Um, you can add it in.
You can handwrite it in.
Right now?
You can handwrite it in. Yep, and then there's spots that I typed in your name, you'll all need to sign.
Okay.
We just need a second.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I'll second that, Nicole Mello.
Okay, motion is made and second, and can we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Aye.
And I vote, I vote aye also. So, that motion is passed. Just add it right now, just write it right in, Todd?
Write neatly.
I have a question, just in regards to, do I have to say aye, Nicole Mello? Like, we were in Zoom and I was getting into saying it, but now that we don't have Zoom and you can all see that I'm Nicole Mello, um, okay. I don't want to continue to do something that...
We used to do the roll call votes and stuff like that because some people's cameras weren't on.
Yeah, so...
So, you don't, we don't have to do that anymore.
Okay.
Okay, and sign it right now? Should we sign this right now?
Yes, please.
Did you vote it or just motion second?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was motion second passed, we did that.
We did, okay.
Didn't we?
Last I checked.
Are you paying attention, Todd?
She distracted me.
Thank you, dear. You shall be included. Okay, moving on. Review, discuss, act 2158 Pleasant Street Building Permit Application. Do we have anybody speaking on that?
Hold on one quick second.
What do we need?
So, down here is your approval of it, up here is the designated people. So, you have to sign up here as a designated people.
Okay.
And then you're signing the law authorizing those people.
Okay, so they should sign on the top. How about the second page?
What is the second page? Roz, why the two of them?
Just in case for some reason there was a typo on them.
In case there was a what?
A typo.
Okay, so do you want me just to take this one out?
Well, you already wrote Todd on both of them.
Yeah, so do you want me to sign off this one and keep this as the master?
Sure.
How's this? Okay, top line, are you bringing?
Can I hear top line?
All right, 2158 Pleasant Street. If you want to come closer, you're gonna be speaking at the podium when it's your turn. This is...
Can we have your name, please?
Yes.
Just for record.
Attorney Robert Fredericks, I'm here for the property owner, Ms. Devova, who's the applicant in the building permit application.
Okay, thank you, Roz.
So, this started, we got a call from a tenant who was trying to move into the third floor, and the space wasn't up to minimum housing standards, so we went and looked at it. At that point in time, it was, we found four bedrooms up on the third floor. We pulled out the septic plan, the septic is only approved for six bedrooms. Uh, that's, that's a system that was designed, approved, as-built, everything, certificate appliance, it's, it's all up to snuff. Uh, so, we questioned having, say, 10 bedrooms on a six-bedroom septic system. They did go and do a Title V inspection, which passed, the system is working just the way it's supposed to. But this is, uh, an area where in the past, there has been discussion on the determination of whether it's new construction or repair, and whenever there's a, an argument about it, it comes in front of the board, I am not allowed to make that determination. So, the issue is that, well, he can present for the other side, I guess, but, um, so I, at this point, can't sign off on the building permit because it appears to be an increase in bedrooms. And so, that's where we're at, that's why it's on the agenda, because they wanted their opportunity to present their side.
So, my client bought the property, it was advertised actually as 12 bedrooms, and that's how she bought the property, the property's always been used as 12 bedrooms. So, what had happened over some period of time is my client had actually reduced the bedroom size from 12 to 11. Um, in the, in the Title V that was produced, there was a plan and approval done for 11 bedrooms. The, the flow that they expected, the design flow was for 660, and they looked back over the last two years and the flow was 336. So, certainly, the property was operating well within the established, uh, parameters of what was expected for the, 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 uh, system. But the, the bottom line is that the property has always been used as a three-fam, three-family property with bedrooms on each floor, it's always been consistent through each of the owners. Um, I, my, I don't believe my client had anything to do with the previous plan, I don't know where that was submitted, but it certainly wasn't provided to her when she acquired the property. So, this, it was all set to be advertised and was in fact being used as 12 bedrooms.
Now, you said the plan, there was a plan and it was approved, and it was installed as a 12, as 11-bedroom?
So, what, what I'm saying to you is the title report that we've produced. So, there was a concern about the Title V as, as it related to the Board of Health signing off. So, we had the property inspected, we produced the inspection, the inspection reflects 11 bedrooms and with the anticipated flows...
It's a Title V inspection?
And we've produced it to the, the inspecting agent.
Yes, you actually have in front of you the floor plans of the, um, property that was submitted with the Title V inspection.
When was the, um, the septic installed?
1999.
Do you have those plans?
I do.
Can I see them?
Is he saying that the another inspection done and it's...
Afterwards? It's just Title V inspection?
Yeah, they just did the Title V inspection July 6th, or something like that, June 17th.
If, if I may inquire, she purchased the property in 2015, was there, there was a passing report produced to her when she purchased the property in 2015, is that on record with you?
I don't believe it is. I think we went looking for this before and we never found it. But back then, we weren't requiring copies of, um, floor plans.
Okay.
When did you file the property?
2015.
Do you have the Title V inspection on that?
I do not.
They're saying we can't find it here, I'm, I mean, we know there was one, there had to be one, but...
I was not involved in the, the conveyance.
Now, this is a proposed plan. Is there an as-built to it?
There was an as-built, um, at some point, it, um, it's not in the file anymore, but we had several Title V inspectors come in and we pulled it out for meetings with the, um, the owner, but we can't find it at this point in time. But it was, it's in with the Title V inspection, they've got a copy of it, I think. But it was built...
Yeah, sometime. Um, have you contacted the bank to see if they have a Title V?
Is Title V when you closed?
I have not.
No, no, we, we really need a Title V.
So, this is the Title V report that just passed, and you can see the system's effectively the way it was supposed to be.
So, it does have a 1,500 gallon tank in it?
Yes.
Can I see that?
Yep. I, I just don't understand where, here it's saying exists in six bedroom and then it's jumping up to 11 bedroom?
And there was no done work on the, no, no property done on the, like, no giant expanse done on the property or anything like that, so it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to us either. As I said, the property was marketed as a 12-bedroom property, she purchased it as a 12-bedroom property. It was, in, in the Title V inspection was done and subject to the purchase that approved it for the 12 bedrooms.
So, as part of this process, the, one of the things we always do is we go to the assessors for their field card to see what they're reporting, and they're reporting it as a 13-room house with six bedrooms, so I asked for how she came to that. This is the MLS listing for when the current property owner bought the property in December of 2015. That, it's highlighted on the last page for the date of it. So, the assessors is basing their information on that MLS list, listing.
Correct, but the, it, it's no different than when you went out there to inspect, you identified four bedrooms on the third floor, so it's just, it's inaccurate. I mean, what's there is what's there.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying when the property was listed in the MLS, it was listed as however many bedrooms that was. 11 total rooms and five bedrooms and two bathrooms. That's what was in the house when the current owner purchased the property. It says something, if you read the remarks there, right in the middle of the page, it says something about an in-law on the third level?
Yeah, um, the third floor, they rented out.
Nicole?
Oh, it, it's not a question that needs to be...
No, they just want to rent it out, they want to increase it.
Oh, that's, I wasn't sure that was...
Have you, so you haven't contacted the bank to see if they have a Title V?
My, my clients provided it, she actually had it.
Oh, okay, great.
So, just to see, you know, the issue here is not whether she can finish the third floor or not. The issue is, can she finish the third floor? Or if it was already there or whatever, she still needs a building permit, so there's still an occupancy permit required. Can she use the existing system, or does some work need to be done to the current system in order to give it some extra capacity? Because the system is working, you can add to the capacity of the system.
We're not, we're not looking for a change of views, the, the system is designed to handle the amount of bedrooms that are actually there. So, I, I can't say, my, my client only basically suggested to me, it was her first time buying a house and she might have missed some details, but she, when she walked through the property, it had 12, 12 bedrooms at the time, and she's actually eliminated one. She hasn't done any substantial work to the property, she hasn't expanded it, she hasn't finished floor space. She, it is exactly how she bought it. And the other part is, I mean, I, I know how this came up, it's an unfortunate circumstance where I think a professional tenant is trying to take advantage of a first-time landlord.
Have you looked at this?
I, I looked at it briefly, what she highlighted for me, I was able to see what it is.
The owner said five bedrooms?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Design flow based on 550...
Correct.
Gallons per day?
Right, it's, it's inaccurate.
Okay, so, if I were to buy this house and I had this, and you know I'm a Title V inspector, and I had this, and I went to the bank, and they're telling me it's an 11 or 12 or 14 or 18, and I have this in my hand, and it's saying it's good for five bedrooms.
There's a piece...
I would question it.
There's a piece missing in that, though.
What's the piece?
It's, so, doing the closings, in the way this works, when I send this as a closing attorney and they see passing, they don't read it.
Well, I know that, but that's...
That's, that's how this has happened.
My first thing I said was, as an owner, but then I know to watch these.
Right.
And I don't see how any Title V inspector would say it was good for 12, it's not.
Well, the, the...
They're not saying it's good for 12.
What are they saying?
They're saying the system is functioning based on the flow out of that building right now. If there's 12 bedrooms in the house and a six-bedroom septic, that has nothing to do with whether it fails the Title V.
In the, the, that's based on a two-year study of the usage. So, the, the, the current Title V report you have looked at what they were actually doing there and said, based on the design and what they've been producing, that they're well within the system's ability to...
That's right.
And serve those needs.
But if in turn she sells the house and somebody moves in and they have a family with six kids on the first floor, and a family with six kids on the second, and a family with four on the third, do you think that's still going to hold?
Well, then they're gonna have to deal with it when it fails, this is the nature of real estate always.
This is what I mean, they have to deal with it, it fails, and we just don't want it to fail.
No, and based upon...
Because then they're gonna say, how did you let it go?
And based on the count, designing, usage, it's not failing.
Right here it said five.
So, the threshold here is because they're pulling a building permit or have pulled a building permit? Jim, have they applied for one?
No.
So, they, they need a building permit for the third floor because of the work they're doing on it. That requires the Board of Health to sign off, and that's where, that's the holdup. It's not because the, the Title V passed with 11 bedrooms or anything like that, it's because of the building permit that's requiring this. And that's why I'm saying I can't sign off on a building permit until we work out whether or not it's existing flow or not existing flow. This is a, a definition thing between new construction or, that we're not changing anything, so therefore they can continue onward. But anytime you pull a building permit, we require a Title V inspection, which obviously, that's what you've got in front of you and the system is working.
Now, I would add that we're pulling, we're pulling the permit to address the issues that you've brought as a result of the complaints. So, we're not trying to do any sort of expansion further of what's there. Again, I, I can't impress that upon you enough, she's never done any expansion, she's never finished any bedrooms. It's been, it, the property has been in this condition since the time she's purchased. What's happened is she unfortunately ran into a situation where she rented to a tenant who I strongly suspect is simply trying to game the system and suing her for stuff that's, in my opinion, ludicrous, but that's neither here nor there. But the bottom line is, she's now stuck with a tenant who's suing her and a Board of Health agent who's done an inspection saying you need to make repairs. For her to be able to defend herself from this circumstance, she has to pull, pull a building permit to make those repairs, that's all we're asking.
Which should be done.
Right, and we're not asking, again, we're not asking for any other, anything more than the ability of the sign off on the building permit so she can fix what needs to be addressed.
But the building permit's not going anywhere unless this signs off.
Correct, and that's why we're here.
Right, so the question is, is this new construction and they need to add flow to the system, or because the system's always had this many number of bedrooms that they can be allowed to continue forward without having to upgrade the septic?
Do you want to say something, Jim?
I do.
Good.
So, Chief Aguirre, Building Commissioner, I think everybody's here. So, I will tell you, this is a Victorian-style home, this is a three-family, always been a three-family, had three to four bedrooms on each floor. I know this because I've been in the home shortly after, um, she bought it. She had structural issues in the basement that needed to be repaired, so I was brought in, she always got her permits. The reason the third floor renovations didn't get permits is because she hired the wrong contractor who didn't get permits. So, she's always done the right thing. I can tell you that this home was at least a nine or 12-bedroom since it was built in the turn of the century. What happened here is unfortunately, the Board of Health in 1999 failed to recognize how many bedrooms were in the home, and this was designed for a six-bedroom. The point that council's trying to make is that the Title V inspector has identified that the historic use under her ownership is less than the 660, meaning that even with 12 bedrooms or 11 bedrooms, we are not exceeding the flow rate that this was designed for. I understand your concern that if the, the, the property changes hands and we have different people in there, that may go up, but we have a system that's functional. I think we have a problem when the system was designed in 99 that the Board of Health or its agent or whoever failed to capture the fact that the actual bedroom count in this building was between nine and 12 bedrooms. And so, we're here, and unfortunately, as council said, we have a first-time home buyer who I'm sure nobody looks past page one once they see pass or fail. They don't look at the body of those reports, but it doesn't mean she should be chastised for it. If we had a system that was, that the flow was exceeding the 660, or we had a failure from the Title V inspector, then obviously that would warrant an upgrade or repair. But I don't see how that's possible here.
Are we privy to the complaints?
The complaints on the housing?
Yes.
Um... I have no problem sharing the complaint letter, we've been dealing with, Mr. Aguirre, you've been out to the property to see what we're trying to do.
Yeah, it's, oh, that's right, it is public record. Yep.
I have enough for everybody in the audience, but you've seen...
I have, I have.
They have a two right here.
Same one.
And a, one and all?
No, it's just the ones, two pages left.
What did you find on the third floor? What's up there now?
There was an apartment there, there's always been an apartment.
The same toilet?
Yeah, yes. This, that apartment, by the way, has two full second means egresses, uh, egresses. Whenever you have a third floor attic conversion, you always have one egress missing because there was never two egresses to the, to the attic area. It was always accessed by either a narrow stairway or a ship's ladder or something like that. This house has two fully functional means of egresses, so there was always three apartments here.
Right to the third floor?
Right, there was always three apartments here.
If you've had an opportunity to review the letter, I'd like to address it just briefly.
Jim, how many, how many bedrooms on the first floor?
But you got the floor plan right in front of you.
Yeah.
These, the eleven-by-seventeens.
Um, there's between three or four. I just, I haven't been on that floor for a while.
The, the owner's indicating there's three.
Yeah, the floor plan shows two, but there's an office that may very much meet the definition of a bedroom. There's no dimensions on it, but it looks like it's big enough to be a bedroom.
I would agree that there's three bedrooms on the first floor.
Which one did you say is, might be a bedroom?
The office.
First floor?
The office. Like, the bottom right next to the title block. Because obviously, a dining room, kitchen, living room are not bedrooms.
Everything I see says six bedrooms, or five, five, six. Even this newest Title V inspection is six. And let, I feel-
So, the newest, the newest one has eleven?
Well, six is the approved flow on the septic, is what it's showing in the Title V.
On page seven.
Yes, 'cause it's, uh, on section D, it's saying number of bedrooms designed is six. The actual is eleven.
Who's saying that?
The, the Title V inspector, Paul Gueva.
Which page?
Page seven of eighteen.
Okay, what do you see there?
It says, under section D, system information, number of bedrooms designed six, number of actual eleven.
Did you see, did you see the design flow right under it?
No, I understand. And then it goes down under the same section to, to show the water reading meanings over the last three years of three hundred and thirty-six, which is nearly half what the design's for.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, my point is that the, that the, the existing situation is not failing. It's not close to failing.
That's right, because-
And, and the only, the only reason we're here is because a tenant who didn't actually move into the property is gaming the system to sue a first-time homeowner. It's a truly unfortunate circumstance.
That's your, that's your dealing, you know?
I understand, but it's, it's what triggered this, otherwise we wouldn't do it.
On the plan, first and second floor, I come up with six bedrooms. On the plan. On the Title V inspection, I come up with six bedrooms. Actual is actual, but number of bedrooms designed is six.
Correct.
And, working or not working, that's what it's designed for.
I don't, I, that's, I understand your point. It is.
Uh, because- You count the bedrooms on the plan, that's only nine bedrooms. Am I, am I counting wrong?
Well, the first floor-
Well, 'cause grant, grant room, I think, is technically a bedroom.
Huh?
Um, first floor, the office could be used as-
Okay, I didn't-
And I'm assuming grant room is a bedroom? Is a grant person?
Yes, it's a person.
All the other bedrooms are just labeled number one, number two, but grant room is a bedroom.
Jim, did you know that the grant room is a bedroom?
I do.
Yeah.
Madam Jim.
I'm sorry.
I, with due respect, I understand completely what you're saying. I've inspected over thirty-five hundred systems in my days. But the fact that the system was designed for six, when this house clearly had more than six, when it was built in the late eighteen hundreds, doesn't this board have some responsibility in that? It was designed incorrectly in nineteen ninety-nine. I know that none of you are responsible for that. Neither is Todd or Roz. But someone through the Board of Health is responsible for that. No one went into the home to accurately count the bedrooms so they could design the system accordingly. So, that, you know, why should this owner, who clearly showed that the system is being used at almost fifty percent of what it's currently designed for, have to upgrade a system when this body was partially responsible?
Do you have to, so, this was, when was that system, nineteen?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
It doesn't matter. I'm responsible for permits that were issued in my office back from the dawn of time. That's the responsibility that I had take as being the Building Commissioner. So, there is some responsibility by this body. If this system were being overtaxed, and we had eight hundred gallons a day, then I think your argument is, is, is real. Um, I do understand your point, because with a valid Title V, um, she can sell the property to someone else. They would be buying the problem as well. Just like she did. But, as far as I know, it's not her intent, her intent is to stay in Dayton.
I mean, the, the, the property owner has real roots here. She's the prop, she's the bank manager of the Bay Coast branch in Dayton. She lives here, her kids go to school here. She's not an outside, you know, landlord. That's not what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, as I say, it's, it's, the, the, the how we got here matters in this circumstance. Because it's not a situation that she thought she was getting away with something. She was a first-time home buyer, she didn't read a Title V report. I deal with that every day. And that's, they, they have no idea. Jim knows this. I'm sure you do too, Madam Jim. People don't read these. Oh, it passed. Okay, good, I got my dream home.
I know they don't read them, but it's their responsibility to read them.
By beware, absolutely. But the, the bottom line is, she wa, it was introduced to her and told to her, which is consistent with what the building inspector's telling you, is that it was being used by actually, at the time, twelve, because she actually diminished the, the, the number of bedrooms by one. So, she's never expanded it, she didn't, she didn't ever try to make it bigger. She didn't change its use, she hasn't substantially done anything. What she's done is run the property as traditionally it's always been operated. So, its use is consistent. That it had a defect that no one picked up until, unfortunately, this circumstance has arisen is truly unfortunate for my client, you know, for the board, for, for the, for the agent. But the bottom line is, that other than a bad actor, we wouldn't be standing here. And what we're asking for is, a comment, uh, any sort of reading of this report says that the system is in good shape. It's gonna be well-working in, in, to the future. There's no reason to think it's going to fail. We're not going to add or burden it further than what it is already being used for. And I think you, I, I think you have a, a simple ability here to say, look, okay, fine, but we're telling, you know, we're gonna make sure, we talk to Mr. Pilling, we talk to your building inspector. If there's a for-sale sign, we're gonna make sure that, that the next folks know what they're getting. I mean, you're well within your rights to enforce it going forward.
May I speak on this?
Of course.
Um, I don't see any reason to penalize her. I understand that, um, things were missed. Things were missed by the board, things were missed by, um, her when she purchased it. Um, if there's any way that going forward, like he had just mentioned, that we make sure that when it goes for sale, that this does not happen to somebody else. I think that's the best thing that we could do for somebody.
I have to agree with you.
The numbers show that it does not show any signs of failing at this point. And I know we don't want it to get to that point, that's, but, I just, that's what I've included from everyone's information.
What a really well-working system is holding up the fact of electrical work not being performed and finished. Just saying, she, this is, this is a health and safety issue as well.
I know.
So, yeah, so, I mean, for me, this is a, if we have a working system, but we have a health and safety issue of electrical, I think from my standpoint, I think it kind of goes with what he said, and, you know, if it doesn't have-
It's one of our best issues.
Exactly, but, I mean, we have a health and safety concern where, you know, there's wiring that needs to be addressed.
And, and I, I think Mr. Aguirre can comment on this. She's working with you. She's doing everything she can. The worst thing she did was hire the wrong guy.
Right. And she has obtained permits for this property since she purchased it. So, that's the only reason I know of the property, is she came in to get permits. There were structural issues, I went through all three floors to look at the cracking and see what needed to be done. Um, at that time, she hired the right contractor. She has done some renovation work in some of the apartments. Uh, this renovation work should have been permitted, but she hired a licensed contractor who didn't get the permit unbeknownst to her. So, unfortunately, that happens.
Hopefully, she'll be seeking some type of-
It's why there's an attorney present.
Something against him.
Roz, is this from, um, who is this from?
That's the multiple listing service for when she purchased the property. Like, that's from the assessors.
From the assessors, distinct assessors?
Yeah, 'cause that's how they're assessing the house.
What is the assessment now, how many bedrooms do you know?
It's, yeah, it says it's got thirteen rooms and six bedrooms and three baths. So, but that says two baths, so, obviously, there's discrepancies here as we go through time, so.
Okay, um, let's see, let's see, who is this?
I mean, she's proved herself to be a responsible homeowner because of the fact that she's actually trying to work with this, with the town. Um, I think if there was a failure of this system that's working really well, I'm assuming that she's not gonna let it sit there and, 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 like, stink up the neighborhood.
When it says grant room, that's her son. She's not gonna allow the property to fail her son.
Ex- exactly.
If I may just add to them, I'm aware that this is-
Could you please come up and speak?
Yes.
And introduce yourself.
I'm Yana Dubova, I'm the owner of two-one-five at Pleasant Street. And I am very well aware the system was built in ninety-nine. Todd brought to our attention first time what the craziness is around it. And I am prepared to replace the system if it does start showing any signs of having problems. But, everything has, that's the best I can do, is do the Title V presented here to try and get back the occupancy so I can deal with the electrical and the plumbing. It is an eighteen-fifty property. Anytime you touch anything, nothing's anymore up to date. So, that means that if I wanna do anything to anything, I need everything updated. I had four contractors come through the house today in order to start giving me full pricing. They will not work with me and start any work until the tenant moves all her belongings, which has been nothing but a nightmare. And I have, I cannot financially commit to contractors doing any work or following permits if I don't get occupancy back approved for that third floor. Because that's just financial suicide. So, that's why we're here tonight, and that's why I have Attorney Fredericks here to represent me. Because I'm learning along this process, that nothing looks as it seems. So, that was my first time I bought the home. If I had known what I know now, I would have walked away and not buy the house. Or requested the seller fixes a lot of stuff that we have now become aware of, so.
And for the record, it's not that I'm opposed to this. Just the, the, the previous board before you here made it very clear that I am not to make these kind of decisions, that it has to come to the board. So, um, that's why it's here. So.
Now, when you purchased this house, how many bedrooms did they say it had?
On the MLS, MLS listing, it clearly shows, it says five, uh, five bedrooms. But, it, it doesn't, it contradicts itself. If you read the, the narrative, it, it's not consistent. And it's, it's, this is a misrepresentation by a broker is what this is. 'Cause it reads through the opportunities, two-unit homes, so forth and so on, with an in-law on the third level. Mr. Building Inspector, are in-laws permitted in the town of Dayton?
No, they're not.
Okay, so, we, we can already start from a, a position of, uh, it's, this was, you know, somebody trying to paint a picture of not, uh, which was not accurate within the, the meanings. So, basically, it was misrepresented to her. And then you walk in, and guess what? There's twelve bedrooms. I mean, you know, and Mr. Pilling saw it, Mr. Aguirre saw it, they exist. And, and she didn't construct them.
Yeah, for the record, I did not see it. I only went into the third-floor unit, I've never seen any of the rest, the rest of the house.
Sorry, but I didn't mean to suggest, but my point is, when you, when you walked in, you saw what's four bedrooms. I mean, they exist. So, again, trying to, when a, I'm a licensed real estate broker, I try to be more careful with my words. Because permits do matter, and I take your point for that. But what this broker did was say it's two-unit with an in-law. Well, that's not true. In-laws don't exist in the town of Dayton unless you go get a variance. So, this was telling her, you've got three living, uh, three, three floors of living space, when in fact, the town only showed two.
The town only showed two?
Well, it's, if, if it's going by eleven and five on the permit, I have to assume that it wasn't counting the third floor. Because the third floor is being represented as an in-law. So, I have to assume what they were trying to do is say, oh, it exists, but it's not perm- I, I, I don't know what they're trying to do. I'm trying to get in the mind of somebody who's contradicting themselves. They're saying it's eleven and five on the top right-hand, which they took off a public record. And then in the summary and the remarks, they're describing something that's clearly got many more bedrooms, so.
I guess too, you know, if we don't allow her to fix what she needs to have fixed, that could tax the town more if the place catches on fire. So, and if the system's working, she needs to move ahead, so then that way, the place doesn't catch on fire, and she can fix the electrical and the plumbing stuff that's there now. And she's willing to, if something happens, she's willing to step up to the plate, but-
Well, just for the record, I don't allow things to stay in place that can't catch fire. So, there's no need for that.
No, but you know what I'm, but you know what I, but, but when you have it listed as, when you have it listed as health and safety, I take that very seriously.
So do I.
And so, for me, you know, we have a system that's working, and we're holding up progress, and allowing the place to be safe again.
What it does, to your point, is it stops any repairs from being made, and the place will remain vacant.
Correct.
I don't know if it was said, but this is also an owner-occupied property. This is not an absentee property, so.
Mm-hmm. And she has children, and I-
Okay, well, I, I don't think I can vote on this actually, because, um, we have business together. Um, so, I just wanted to put my input. I wasn't sure about it, but I don't wanna vote, I'm not going to vote on this myself.
Well, you don't have a motion yet, so.
I know that, I'm just prepping everybody.
Yep.
'Cause I wanna be honest here. But I do want my input because of being Title V inspector and installer. Do I have a motion?
I guess I need to know exactly how it needs to be worded, just because this is my new, this is new, but I, I, I make a motion that we allow her to get her building permit. So, then that way, she can do the appropriate, um, home improvements that need to be done, so that she can get out of this mess.
I'm just wondering if we should put something in there that if they are having problems, that we won't be held liable either. I don't wanna go ahead and say, okay, here you go.
I was just joking.
Hi, Jim.
So, what has been done in the past-
Yeah.
Uh, is that if the system goes into failure-
Okay.
This body has the authority to mandate pumping on a regular basis. Weekly, monthly, whatever it takes.
You know, four pumps is a failure.
Right. But, at that point, it would become a failed system, and then she would put out notice to, to repair it. And at that point, I think what AG Pilling is saying, it will be an upgrade, so it will require multiple perk tests, et cetera, et cetera.
'Cause it is twenty-three years old.
Right.
But we, we've seen, we've seen systems a lot old ago and work perfect.
Right. But, knowing, knowing how the owner takes care of the property, um, if she's allowed to rent all three units, and that does happen, I'm quite certain that she'll replace the system.
You wanna draw something up?
I kind of, I kind of made a motion already.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
A second, no.
A second now.
Um, I dropped out of votes.
You're recusing yourself?
I'm recusing myself.
I vote yes.
You vote yes. On assignment, and you vote yes. Did you say aye? I couldn't hear you from over here.
Sorry, I was too quiet.
I know, you're quiet. You're so good. Nice and quiet. Okay, so that motion does pass, um, to allow building inspector continue. And but if there is any problem, we'll be notified immediately and assist pumping or replacement. Because we do want you to go forward with this and get a resolution.
Appreciate your time.
Motion does pass. Thank you. Night, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need your title flyer before, back in twenty fifteen?
Uh, okay, Jim.
I was gonna say, do you want to take a copy of your records?
It's actually.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thanks, Adam.
No, she said we could keep it. She's got another copy.
We don't want a five. Okay. Let's go on to, uh, four D. Review, discuss act change in transfer station days of operation. Now open Tuesday and Saturday. New days of operation proposed for Wednesday and Saturday. Which.
Did you want to talk?
John didn't.
No.
Come.
He is. He's here.
Oh, sorry, couldn't see you, John. Why don't you come up and speak to us a little bit, John? Introduce yourself.
Hi, John.
Hey, Lawrence. Hello, good evening, all. My name is John Lawrence. I am currently the transfer station attendant. Um, currently, the hours are Tuesdays and Saturdays, but I've been approached to change it from Tuesdays to Sat- to Wednesdays moving forward.
So John can't be there on Tuesday, so the DPW has been working all those shifts? And so that's why we're moving it, so that Mister Lawrence can be there Wednesday and Saturday.
And we're still going to keep the same hours on, um, Wednesday, which I believe was nine to eleven.
Which is very good. I understand you're going on vacation, so.
Yes, the next two the next two, um, Saturdays, I will not be here.
Yeah, but you you could be there every Wednesday. Joyfully.
Great, John. Did I see you joining cable as well?
Yes.
He's also the he's also the chairman of the Solid Waste Committee.
I was excited to see that. I'm excited to see people get involved and then branch out to other things.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And he's excellent chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Great. Do I have a motion on this?
Um, I motion that we change, um, the transfer station days from Tuesday and Saturday to new operation days of Wednesday and Saturday.
Second.
Okay, and can I have a vote on it?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. New operation transfer days will be Wednesday and Saturday. Thank you, John.
When does this take place and affect, like, immediate, like, a couple of weeks to notify the community?
The plan is is that right now, we can text the town administrator, and he can get it out on Facebook. And the Highway Department can get it out on the message boards tomorrow, so it could start Wednesday next week.
This coming week.
Um, just keep in mind with my main job, uh, probably November and December, I probably will not be able to do Wednesdays just because of, um, it'll be peak season over at Amazon.
Because of what, John?
Peak season, so like, when all the customers in Amazon orders everything.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So.
Great Amazon.
Probably November, December, I won't be able to work just Wednesday.
Yeah, but that's better than to be able to do forty of the Wednesdays instead of zero of the Tuesdays, so.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And thank you for letting us know ahead of time.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
We like having you consistent there.
Yeah, thank you.
Plus, the Highway Department is busy other places, too.
Yeah.
They've been covering, and it's been great.
A full agenda.
They've they've gone out of their way.
Yeah.
Can't get any renovations done, so.
I know.
Thank you, John.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, John. You can hang around for a little longer.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, John. Review, discuss act transfer station fee schedule.
So you should have a copy of it in front of you right now. This has been kind of a longstanding issue, uh, with, uh, the fees the right amount. But lately, our fees have gone up dramatically, like thirty percent. So the issue is whether or not we should be raising the fees. But it's also been kicked to the Solid Waste Committee, who has been we we we're not up to speed yet. You'll see later down on the agenda here, we're going to appoint a new member. So we're not at a full committee yet. We've only had a couple of meetings, and the last meeting, I think, only four of the seven members were there. So Solid Waste Committee hasn't had a chance to weigh in fully on all this. But it is something that needs to be looked at. These fees do need to be increased to account for the fees um, that we're being charged to take them away. It's been asked that we analyze the fees for what we're taking in bulky and what it's costing us to get rid of them, to know where we're at. Um, part of the whole analysis that the Solid Waste Committee will be going through. So at this point, whether the board wants to go down these and talk about them or wait till we hear from the Solid Waste Committee, um, it's the preference of the board.
Can I can I ask a question? Um, with regards to this, I know you're going to be looking to increase. Will you be looking at any kind of a discount or anything for veterans and seniors?
That is one of the items on the list of, um, so to to, yeah, list of topics that the Solid Waste Committee was because Solid Waste Committee is going to be advising the Board of Health, and that may be one of the things that is is on there, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, John, do you want to get up and speak to this at all? Because I know you're the chairman of the Solid Waste Committee also.
We're talking about the fees, right?
Yeah, the fees.
Hello again. About the fees, I think we could talk for a couple of hours about this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at the last meeting, whoever was present, um, some things can get changed. Like, we brought up, uh, the mattresses. Um, that has been skyrocketing, and yeah, just.
I know this disposal fee right now is how much on the mattresses?
What we're collecting is fifteen dollars per mattress.
Yeah.
But it's costing us ninety dollars each to get rid of them.
So that's the town has to make up the difference.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and at the previous meeting, we were discussing it, um, uh, to raise the price, I think it's like sixty a mattress, I think.
We had thrown around picking a number that was in between until we know the mattress prices are continuing to go up.
Do we have any data on how many mattresses we actually bring in a year or something?
We don't do any tracking. Uh, we estimate it's around two hundred.
Is there a way of tracking?
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
Well, we need a system. We definitely need a system out there so we can track everything. And that would be pressing a button and finding out, okay, we're spending this, and this is how much is coming in. Uh, between.
Solid Waste Committee is getting into the weeds of all that.
Okay, as well as like tracking how many get dumped on the side of the road so we can do like a cost analysis.
So I I I have a concern with adjusting these when we don't know what our revenue stream is.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just don't want to pick a number.
Yeah.
I think we should come up with a fee schedule that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
And until we do that analysis based on our cost and our revenues, we don't know what that is.
Mm-hmm.
So I've asked, um, Agent Pilling to bring that to our next meeting so we can vet it and then see if there are other places where we can dispose of items like mattresses. I emailed a few companies. They've not been responsive. That's not a good sign.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I we really need to make sure we we do our better best for the citizens of this town, so.
So I was going to bring it up under correspondence, but there is a Zoom meeting happening the last week of July that's DEP is putting it on, because everybody's in the same boat we are, and they're inviting everybody to attend. So I was going to suggest that we circulate this to the Solid Waste Committee and Board of Health so everybody can look at it. Then later in the week, there's one for health agents only, just to talk about amongst ourselves, what are we doing about this? Is there any way to regionalize to do things like, you know, because this is this is a problem. This is a big problem. And that's just mattresses. We still got to get into the trend, the simple recycling, the other textile program, we got to get into that, too, but it's all similar type issues. It's November first is the waste ban on this stuff, so it's going to get between now and November first, things are going to get a little a little costrary.
I agree. I think we just we send it to the Solid Waste Committee and have them come back with a recommendation after they've done their analysis. And we can sit here and talk until we're blue in the face, but we won't have any more. We won't have any more information, so I make a motion that we this this item gets transferred to the Solid Waste Committee.
Very good. Um, do I have a vote on this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed to hold off and see the recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee in the future. ASA P. I'll be there at the next one. I'm on my, I'm rolling. Um, okay, F. Review, discuss act changes to the textile recycling program. Simple Recycling.
Simple Recycling is the company that's given us all the pink bags, which you see everywhere in town. We usually collect about three thousand pounds a month in those pink bags. What's been happening is Simple Recycling drives into town with a white van and follows the trash route of that day, picks them up, and then takes them. They used to have an office in Taunton, so it wasn't really a problem. They've closed that office in Taunton. They're now at a Woburn. So for them to drive to all the way here and then drive around town, it was it's it was too much so that they want to modify the program, and they want people to call for pickup dates. People tried to call for pickup dates, and they were told they didn't have any pickup dates. So we've asked them if we can get all the pink bags to the transfer station, if they can come and pick them up when we have enough of them to fill a van, so it's worth their while. And they agreed to this, and how many pink bags are there now?
Ugh, at least over fifty.
Yeah, and so we've reached out to them, um, but we haven't gotten any response in the last few days. So we called the main office to see if we can get somebody down to pick them up. But what do we do with the program? Do we switch over to a different kind of collection? Do we make our own pink bags? Again, it's a lot of information gathering that we need to do with other companies that do this, so, um. But I think, being a capitalist society, in the ban coming November first, I think we're going to see other avenues for people to take this product. But as of right now, we're kind of.
Still a few months away.
But it's going to come up quick, so. But again, it's another one that we're in the weeds on at Solid Waste Committee, so.
All right, so make a motion that it goes to the solid, we transfer this to the Solid Waste Committee and wait for their recommendation?
I second that.
Do I have a vote on the motion to, um, wait for the Solid Waste Committee to come up with some kind of a recommendation?
Can there be discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. I'm sorry. Mister Aggyar, please have a discussion.
So I have a concern with fifty pink bags at the transfer station and the company not responding to us.
Mm-hmm.
So at the last committee meeting, I made a recommendation that if we have to drive them to Woburn, then maybe we need to do that. The problem with that is it costs taxpayers money to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So I said maybe we could charge a novel fee for the pink bags, which would cover the cost of the fuel and the drivers to bring them to Woburn. I think the problem that we're going to get with Simple Recycling is with the cost of fuel and the lack of manpower or workers. Uh, they're not going to come to Little Dighton anymore, which is a which is a problem. So that fifty bags can become a hundred bags, because I see how popular the program is in Dighton. So the Solid Waste Committee may come back to you with that recommendation fairly quickly because we don't want to have these things sitting at the transfer station. That's all stuff that's supposed to be recycled and go back into, uh, use. And if it sits in bags, the transfer station outside presumably? Ex- yes, exposed to the weather and other, um, stuff. So that's an issue.
It is under a canopy, but it is outside.
Correct, but yeah.
And have we called Big Brothers Big Sisters, which also has a program that will pick up?
Coming in?
Big Brothers Big Sister used to have a program, and I think they're actually on forty-four.
I didn't think they did close. I thought it was just furniture and such.
No, they do close, and they actually pick up. So I think it's worth looking into other companies, and Big Brothers Big Sister is a nonprofit.
Well, we currently have a three-year contract with Simple Recycling, so we have to find out what their, um, plan is. Are they looking to break the contract?
Oh, maybe, yeah, absolutely.
Because we start sending everything to somebody else when we have a contract.
When does their plan end?
We just re-upped, what, two months ago, three months ago?
Is there anything in the contract about them, like, if they don't reach out?
Yeah, not following through.
It seems like, I would guess, they're breaching.
Yeah, I was going to say they're breach.
I think they're breach, yeah.
Well, that was what the Solid Waste Committee did vote, was to have the town administrator write a letter to them saying, we have a contract with you. What are your intentions?
Okay. So can I have a vote on that? Anything else, Jim? We just did the motion. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes to, uh, hold off and find out, let the Solid Waste come back with some things. Um. Review, discuss act Solid Waste Committee, a subcommittee of the Board of Health, mission statement. Would you like to speak on that, John? The mission statement?
No.
James, would you like to speak on that?
Sure, I I wrote it, so.
Oh, you did? Fantastic.
So you think it's pretty good?
Have a seat, John.
Please do tell, okay? Solid Waste Committee mission statement. The Dighton Solid Waste Committee shall be charged with identifying the disposal needs of the community and the development of responsible solutions for the disposal of solid waste. Our recommendations to the town and its officials shall be mindful of the environment. However, we need to be equally conscious of the economic impact for all Dightonians. Solid waste is a global concern. We must explore local, state, and national opportunities. But our discussions and direction should always keep Dighton in focus. Resident education, forward and responsible thinking, shifting costs to those responsible are some ways we can help Dighton become a leader in planning for responsible solid waste disposal. We should use our time together in a productive way to discuss and debate a topic that burdens us all as humans.
Very good, James.
So that's what the Solid Waste Committee voted as the mission statement, so now we would need the board to vote to adopt that as their mission statement.
I make a motion.
Subcommittee of this board.
I make a motion to accept the mission statement of the Solid Waste Committee.
I second that.
Do we have any, um, discussion? Okay, can I have a vote on that, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And the mission statement, which was very good, is passed. Recommend appoint of new member, Robert Perry, to the, uh, Solid Waste Committee.
So we have been trying to find, we have two members at large, and we've been trying to get Mister Pyers, the former member, chairman of the Board of Health. Um, had originally stated interest, but he's unable to do it at this point in time for personal reasons. Uh, there was also a resident in town who runs the transfer station in Attleboro and reached out to him, and again, a year ago, he said he was interested, but at this point, he can't make the commitment. He's still available if we have questions. Uh, but the third name that was floated is, uh, Mister Robert Perry, who some of you may know is a former Board of Selectman member in town. He was also on the Solid Waste Committee when it existed twenty-something years ago. Um, back, I think, when they were capping the landfill and dealing with pay-as-you-throw trash bags and all that. And he said that he would very much like to be on that board, so I think a committee. I think he would be an excellent member for it, and, um, he sent in an email saying that he is interested in the position. He's the only one we have so far, but again, the board has to make a recommendation to the selectmen to appoint him to the committee so that we can then get it to the selectmen to appoint him.
Um, I'm going to, can I make a motion? Um, so we're sending it to the selectmen for them to appoint him, right?
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. All right, to recommend the appointment of the new Solid Waste Committee member, Robert Perry.
Even though I a hundred percent think he's a wonderful person, he's my next-door neighbor, so I am going to recuse myself from the vote.
I will step down and second that. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Aye.
I single down and say aye, and the motion is passed to recommend the appointment of Robert Perry to the selectman for the Solid Waste Committee. G three, educational materials.
So again, coming out of the Solid Waste Committee, if we're going to start going up with fees for things or changing programs or whatever else, there needs to be a public education component of it. Advising people why we're going up with the prices. We can't just do it and then have everybody clamoring afterwards, why did you do it? So we need to start putting together educational materials for this. And I know part of it's going to be the analysis of what the costs were in twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, which I've done a lot of that analysis, but obviously, it's more cumbersome. We're going to have to, you know, windle it down to something. it's more cumbersome, we're going to have to, you know, window it down to something bite-sized, but, um, and we're going to have to put that together, but if anybody wants to start writing something or doing something, or researching to see if anybody's got education materials, I, I'm guessing at my, the meeting with all the boards of health that we're doing with DEP the last week of July, we're going to get a lot of information then.
I don't feel like I can write something either until we figure out, like, what the recommendations are going to be from, from the solid waste committee, because I can write.
Well, just increase in fees for everything, so.
Just needs to be eloquently written.
I don't want the education stuff to say that, does it? Everything's going up.
Well, this is one of the reasons, was it in twenty-nineteen? Yeah, we raised the price of trash bags, everybody remembers, from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars for a roll of ten trash bags, because we could see that the numbers were going up at that time, and that was an effort to offset that cost. But now the bulky costs are going up, and the recycling costs are also going up, so it's, um, it's a difficult situation to be in.
So do you need a motion, do we need a motion on that? I don't think so.
Mm-mm.
Okay. Um, G four, attendance at next meeting of solid waste committee. I've got it down for August tenth at five-thirty, the next meeting?
No.
No?
August third, isn't it?
Also, if there is anyone out there that's interested in being a member at large, which means a resident, on the solid waste committee, please contact the Board of Health. We'd be more than happy to have you at our meetings.
The next meeting's August third at five-thirty at prime time.
You get, the reason why we mentioned attendance at next meeting is because the previous, um, the last month, we only had four members, and I, I understand people have obligations and things like that, but there's some things and topics that we need to be more heavily discussed that needs more attention than just four people.
We actually thought that it would be beneficial to have more members at the board with us. It doesn't mean that we want you at every meeting, we don't need you at every meeting, but because of the importance of this, and some of the things like the fees, we need to sort of be thrifty on it, not thrifty, but speedy on it, because every day that goes by, we eventually have people paying for other people's trash. So we thought that having more of the board members there might be helpful, um, so this doesn't get dragged out month after month. We know that we probably qualify as a joint meeting, but, uh-
I can be there.
We wanted you to be.
It would. Do you think you'd be able to come, Nicole?
Yes.
The third?
August third.
And, um-
I don't know.
Well, so if, if there's going to be more than one of you, we have to post it that way. If we know right now that only one of you is coming, we don't have to post it.
I don't have my, I don't have my other calendar with me, so I can't really-
No, just forty-eight hours in advance, so.
Oh, okay, I, I actually think I'm not available.
And then one more thing, I know five-thirty is late for, um, a lot of people, so I think after the August, um, meeting, it might be pushed forward, if that works for everybody else.
So right now, out of the five, seven members that are on the committee, uh, one of them works in Boston and can't get here before six, so that was why we've been going later, but that may be subject to change once we get all nine members, so.
Okay, we can try it.
And we aim for the Wednesday night, because we work till five-thirty anyway, so.
Is there a way of changing this meeting to four-thirty?
Sort of. Cable can't be here before six PM, which is why we do it at that time.
Okay.
If cable is not going to be here, we would have to have an alternate method of recording it.
Well, John will do double duty.
Yeah.
Hey, John? Cable and, cable and the meeting.
Yeah, run, run it back and forth.
You can do that, right?
We just have to move the meeting to a Wednesday, so he could be here, yeah.
Double duty.
Oh, boy, John, I don't know. You may regret all this, you may regret it. Okay, thank you so much, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Four H, review, discuss act on the open meeting law complaint.
I, I make a motion to accept the recommendation that we arrest ourselves of the open meeting laws.
Well, first of all, you have to acknowledge that you read and understood the complaint.
I read and understood the complaint. That's, that's the reason why I could make that, that motion.
Yeah, well, all three of you have to state that you did.
Have you read it, Nicole?
Oh, I've read and I understood the complaint.
And I definitely have read it at length. Um, previously, we've had the town administrator, Mike Mullin, respond to this, because he has taken care of the other complaints in town, and I kind of feel like it's best that he handles it, it's in one person that takes care of the response and can keep track of it.
How do you feel, Sean?
Um, I don't really think I understood what you said.
Well, the last time that we did have complaints, we asked Michael, uh, Mike Mullin, our town administrator, to handle it, to, uh, reply to this, to the complaint, because you have to reply back to the state. So he handled it, because he does handle the other ones in, the other departments in town that get similar complaints. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 I finished, but I, I, I-
No, I was just explaining, because she wasn't sure. Mr. Leonard Hall, selectman, would you like to speak on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
The town of Dighton has had a number of complaints filed against a number of boards. A vast majority of those complaints have been filed by the same individual. Mr. Mullin has coordinated with all the departments to streamline that response. In addition, Mr. Mullin has been in touch with legal counsel, so the response that he gives to these complaints is within the law. In addition, he has been in constant contact with the Attorney General's office. That is probably the most important reason why Mr. Mullin should coordinate the response to these complaints, um, to make the Attorney General's office aware of our intent to follow the law, but also to make the AG's office aware that many of the people that are on our committees, that are chairing our committees, are volunteer citizens that don't have a lot of background with the law. And with that argument, the AG's office has been pretty patient and pretty understanding. So I would recommend that you allow Mr. Mullin to handle a response to your complaint, as he has, be quite honest with every committee, uh, and board that has had a complaint come their way.
All right, so I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
I withdraw my motion, and we'll, we transfer it to Mr. Mullin. I make a motion that, that the complaint goes to Mr. Mullin. I was, I, not ever seeing one of these, what it looked like to me, was it, it was actually, and it's all set, and that's what they wanted us to do, and that was why I did my motion, because if you do read it and I do understand it.
Yep.
Um, however, if it hasn't been spoken at by Mr. Mullin, if he has not addressed this, um, then I recommend that that happen first, but.
I second that.
Any discussion? We've already had it from our selectmen. Um, I'd like a vote on this now, please?
Oh, I made a motion.
Um, vote?
Yes. Oh, did she second it? Okay, yes.
And Charlie, did you vote?
I said aye.
I'm sorry.
I said yes.
You talk so sweetly.
Um, I'm an ayes, girl.
Oh, really? Have you really met me?
And I have an aye, and the motion does pass to let town administrator, Mike Mullin, respond to, um, this complaint. Review, discuss act on Mass Environmental Health Association, MEHA, membership renewal. Discussion?
Think you have it in front of you?
MEHA is the Massachusetts Association, Health Association. We are members, um, so previously, two of our members were health agents in other towns, and they had theirs through those towns, but the chairman and myself both had memberships through them. You get invited to conferences on a regular basis, you pay reduced fees, that kind of stuff. It's also a resource we can use for, um, I wouldn't say counsel, but for advice, and, uh, if we wanted to pass a regulation on television, some other towns probably already got it, and there's like a database to pull from and stuff, so, um, I think it's worth all of us being members.
So somebody would have to make a motion to, um-
I recommend, um, I, I make a motion to go with your recommendation for membership in this.
I second that.
Okay.
Got it.
Any discussion? And may I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
I say aye, and motion does pass to join, uh, or renew, I'm sorry, renew Mass Environmental Health Association membership. Next is the inspectors' reports, animal inspector, she's not here, town nurse. Mrs. Mallow?
All right, so I am stepping down from the board.
Thank you.
All right. And I apologize to the people that were at the department head meeting, some of this is going to be repetitive, so you got it at firsthand. Um, so I'm just going to start with COVID real quick. Um, things have pretty much been at the same for the last three weeks, about four cases through Maven, as I keep saying. That's only the cases of people that are having the testing that goes to Maven, this has nothing to do with anyone that's doing home testing, um, so that's what that's based off of. Um, last meeting, I believe I mentioned that I was going to Lincoln Village, I don't think I had went yet. Um, I did go, it went very nice, I did the sun, sun safety education with them, I had about ten residents there, which I thought was a good turnout, it was more than I thought. Um, I really had a great time, I'm hoping to get back there, I'm trying to brainstorm on what else they could use over there, education-wise, health-wise, um, so that I can get back over there and speak with them again. Um, over the weekend, I did attend the firecracker festival, um, I got to introduce myself to the residents, um, tell them what I do, that we have a town nurse, um, I spent a lot of time explaining that I'm not the school nurse. Um, I also explained to a lot of kids that, yes, I do know the school nurse, I actually emailed her to tell her how excited all the kids were that I knew her, um, and how unexcited they were to meet me. Um, so it was a great opportunity, um, to get out there and talk to the folks. Um, I also, last week, have reached out to the council on aging. Um, before Tom Pyers had left, he had, uh, made like a goal for me, and whatever that is, that review that we do, for me to do some kind of write-up in the Strawberry Vine monthly, so I wanted to hold that up and have that done, so I'm hoping next month to have my first little write-up in there. Um, one thing on, oh, yesterday I met with Nate, um, he is from BMC, Boston Medical Center, um, he is like the head point for that, um, healing initiative opioid, um, I don't know what it is, study.
It's the healthy community study.
Yes, so he-
Yeah, I'm involved with Nate as well.
Okay. Um, I didn't realize, um, that Taunton was involved, they must be another, we're with Free Town-
You're, you're with Free Town, Dighton, and Berkeley.
And Berkeley, yep.
I'm in, I'm involved because I'm a Dighton resident.
Oh, okay.
And I'm also the chair of the Taunton OB and task force, so, um, it's all, will be a complement to the town if we can work together, because Taunton offers a lot of the services for opiate overdoses, and, um, hoping that we can collaborate on services so that we can get, um, our opiate overdoses to decline.
Yeah, that's great, now I can mention to him that I know you, um, because he was asking me people-
I'm meeting with him next week, so.
People in town there, yeah, okay.
I'm meeting with him next Thursday.
Okay. So it was just, we just went over, um, very limited stuff, he kind of wanted to get a feel for Dighton, what we had for residents, stuff like that. Um, he also met with the, um, one of the police officers as well. Um, I also did my weekly meeting on the Excellent Grant, um, as I had mentioned at the department head meeting, from that grant, we did get some COVID tests, about twenty cases of them. I've been working with Mike Mullin, as well as reaching out to other town nurses to see how these were dispensed in other towns. Um, I'm hoping to get other departments on board, so that it's, we can dispense of them, not just through the Board of Health. Um, and other towns had great suggestions, I'm hoping to use those. Um, real quickly, I just wanted to touch on monkeypox, because I'm constantly getting emails about it, and I'm, I don't have cable, I don't know if it's on the news, if folks are seeing it, if it's, no, all right. Well, we've had six additional cases in Massachusetts last, um, week, we're up to thirteen statewide. Um, I'm not concerned, um, it's not something that you're just going to be in a room with someone and all of a sudden you develop monkeypox, and you have to be in a room with someone for a very long time. Um, it's more of, it would be more of you are touching somebody and whatnot, but in, just in case folks are concerned with that, they are watching it, Massachusetts is one of the states that got some kind of, um, vaccine if you were exposed, um, we have very limited amount of it, but it is available. That was all I had.
Thank you, Mrs. Mallow. Very good, very interesting.
Do you mean, do you need a motion to accept your report?
No, we usually do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't usually do that, it's just for the regular reports. Health agent report?
Um, yeah, I just touched real quick, is, Nicole, once you figure out where those test kits are, are going to be available, we can get it out on the electronic message boards and on Board of Health webpage, so. Uh, I think I mentioned those two webinars, uh, which are going to be July twentieth and July twenty-eighth. Um, so the July twentieth one is the Mass DEP one that I think, uh, I'm going to forward to all the board members and all the solid waste committee members, if the board wants me to, and then whoever want, it's Zoom, so we don't have to post it, we can all just go. Um, there was a department head meeting the other day, these are the, it was a PowerPoint presentation, you already got it, right? So, um, that's just for your edification, you can read through it whenever, and, what else? MHOA is another group that we belong to, it's a Mass Health Organis, Health Officer Association, and it's another one that has a lot of webinars, seminars, uh, legal help, that kind of stuff. Well, I guess it's not legal help, I guess it's MHAAB, but, um, it's another one that I am a member of, as the health officer, um, in general, again, we had two other board members who were members, so they were already part, I mean, agents in other towns, but they have their, once a year, they have their big thing, it's in a conference down in Falmouth, and it goes on for like three days, and they have a lot of keynote speakers and hot topics, and you jump around for what you want to do. Um, it's something that I did my first, or second year, maybe it was my second year, because I started too late my first year, but then COVID obviously stopped it from happening in person the last two years. It's kind of a, a really good networking session, you get to meet a lot of people from the state and stuff, there's also a lot of vendors there showing you about new septic products, or a whole bunch of other stuff. Um, so anyhow, it's coming up, and, and, when is it coming up? October twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth. You get a discount of twenty percent if you register by July thirty-first, it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars. In the past, I, there's like a retiree rate, there's like two hundred dollars, and that's why Tom Pyers would do it too sometimes, because it was, you know, fairly cheap for what you're getting out of it. Um, I know this year, we're also in, a lot of this stuff is becoming made available on webinars and Zoom and all that kind of stuff, and you can watch videos afterwards, but it has been something historically that mo, almost every health agent in the Commonwealth go to, and I think Jim can probably attest to that, because like every Board of Health across the state closes for like three days, or two days, I guess, one of the days might be a Saturday. Well, it's a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I guess. And it includes lunch and dinner, breakfast on third, on, yeah, breakfast all three days, and lunch and dinner on Wednesday and Thursday, so.
And you're asking for, um, us to make a motion so that you can go?
Yes, if the board feels that they want me to go.
I'm going to read through the lines here.
Yep.
Um, I make a motion that you can go to the conference.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Have fun.
So, we do have a training budget, um, that accounts for all this kind of stuff, so it's all, we have, we have the budget for it all, so...
Yeah, I would, I would hope so, though I wouldn't think you would ask if you didn't have the cash. Okay, thanks.
Can I have, uh, a vote, please?
Yes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, and motion is passed... ...to, uh, attend this conference, the Board of Health. Very interesting.
All right, we also have a Household Hazardous Waste Day coming up on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, from nine to two. It happens at the transfer... August twenty-seventh?
Thank you.
Nine to two. Happens at the transfer station, it's, uh, happens to be the same time the transfer stations open, so it works out pretty well. This is when people can bring hazardous materials down that we can't normally take the rest of the year. So, this would be oil-based paint, uh, chemical fertilizers, uh, oven cleaner, roofing tar, you know, that kind of stuff. There's a long list, it's posted on our website, uh, but we wanna get the word out, so everybody can come down. It's free to residents, so bring down whatever you got that you don't want anymore, and I...
I didn't realize that was for...
It is. Um, what we normally like is one of our board members to be there the day of the event, um, because sometimes they run into issues of what do we do with this, or what do we do with that? Do, again, the transfer station will be open, we also have a dumpster that's there for the trash, and the, uh, somebody from the highway department's there to move things around if they need pallets moved and that kind of stuff, so... Not asking for anybody to commit to it right now, just saying that it's coming up, and put it on your calendar and spread the word. We're being blasted on all sorts of the Dayton webpages and all that, so... Uh, there's also a Massachusetts Bottle Bill that's coming around, I guess it's more under correspondence. It's floating around up there, uh, we just need to be aware of it. They are looking to add to the bottle bill and make the bottle deposit go from a nickel to ten cents, and they wanna add what they call miniatures, otherwise known as nips, onto that list.
Very good.
And I think they're also looking to expand the type of containers, and I feel like they're talking about adding regular water bottles to it.
That's not a bad idea.
So, again, um, if somebody wants to know more about it or whatever, they can go to the Mass Recycle Bottle Bill page, you can write your representatives and tell them you were in favor of it or whatever, but I just want everybody to be aware of it, because it may be coming, so... Now, the D.E.P.'s always trying to come up with new things to remove things out of the waste stream, so, um, making something worth ten cents, then people will either not throw it out of their car, or somebody else will pick it up, so...
Looks like I'm gonna get rich next Earth Day.
(laughing). Buy for five and sell for ten, right?
I can't wait.
Uh, see, other than that, uh, we kind of have a Floria Perk Test going on. We've just been, um, very busy in the office. We've also had vacations that we've been trying to take, in case anybody didn't notice my team.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, that kind of slows us down for getting things done, but, um, otherwise, life goes on, so I don't really have anything else.
Thank you. Building Commissioner, Mr. Agia, anything else we could like to talk about?
Nothing helpful at this time.
Nothing? Okay. Sounds good. Correspondence, of course, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, which we've already gone over.
Um, yeah, the only other thing I got is just, uh, to advise, is advise the board, remind the public that we are meeting, is that Tuesday, next week?
Yes.
Tuesday next week, um, to meet with some of the, God, I'm having trouble finding it now. Was it Emergency something?
D.P.H.
Oh, D.P.H., and to discuss public safety protocols, but we're also gonna be meeting with fire chief, police chief, um, obviously the board members, and, uh, town administrator. So, that's happening next Tuesday. We have an executive session first, because there's a few minutes we have to accept, and then we're gonna go into that right after, so...
That should be a good meeting. Any public input other?
Yes, Mr. Hall, please. I'm going to be speaking as member of the Board of Selectmen, not as, you know, resident of seven sixty Main Street. First item, I am very happy to report that at last night's Board of Selectmen meeting, Matthew Tanis was appointed as Assistant Board of Health Agent.
Thank you.
That will be a huge addition. Matt is a former Selectman, is also a former member of the Board of Health. He is also a health agent in another community. I think he'll be a wonderful addition to, to assist Todd, especially in emergency situations. Um, second item, just to be aware, and you will be getting more communication from, um, Mark Pacico, our town clerk. Beginning Monday, all meetings in the town must, per, throughout the state, must be hybrid. No more Zoom-only meetings. That was something that the governor signed into law. However, um, the Senate and the House are trying to come together with a new law, but beginning Monday, the governor's executive order will go into effect. If it gets changed, Mr. Pacico will notify all the boards. Um, just so you'll be aware, especially Solid Waste Committee, we didn't take a vote on it, but the consensus of the Board of Selectmen is that there be an increase in the mattress fee, a significant increase, because we see that, you know, the Board of Health, like the town, needs to run as a business, and when it's costing ninety dollars to turn in a mattress and we're only getting fifteen, that's not good business. The, um, next item, it was mentioned at the, um, department head meeting, that we will be doing on the town Facebook page, and also on the town page, a feature about Mrs. Mellow, so that all the residents know her role in the, in the town, that she does more than work as a school nurse.
(laughing).
What that may do, because of her role with the school department, or liaison with the school department, she may be getting more phone calls, once they're aware of, you know, her bigger role. Um, I really wanna thank Mr. Lawrence and the Board of Health for switching to Wednesdays and Saturdays. That is going to free up a man for, or a worker, for Tom Ferry, at a time where he much, much needs the additional help.
Mm-hmm.
They have a lot of lawn mowing to do, um, cleanup around town, and having that extra man will be a, a big help. And then, lastly, Mr. Pilling, thank you. Many people, over the last two years, have tried to get Colonel Robert Perry out, to come out of retirement.
Hmm.
Thank you. He, I don't know if, Ms. Bonifant, if you know Bob Perry?
I know him very well.
You know him well?
Yes.
Um, he's, he'll be on that...
He's a very kind man.
Yes. Outstanding addition to your board, so...
I agree with you.
Thank you very much.
Hundred percent. Thank you very much, Leonard. I'd also like to thank Kevin Bonato for the time he spent on the Board of Health, um, whose seat, um, Charlene has taken. I know when I came on, I, I, they kind of threw me at this seat, and Kevin helped immensely. He was always there and always kept saying, "Just keep going, just keep going," and, um, very smart, very knowledgeable man. He aided us in so many different ways, and, um, we really hated to see him go, but there's only so much time in one person's day, and we knew he was stretching it coming here and trying to do his best, and thank you very much, Kevin. Um, approval of minutes. The regular meeting for June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the special meeting for June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I believe I must recuse myself from this, because I was not a member of the board at the time. And also, it was my interview and all that, so I would assume I need to recuse myself.
It would be advisable.
Yep.
Have you read the meeting, the...
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I motion to, can I motion these both in the same, okay? I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the special meeting minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
And I would like to step down and second that motion. Could I have a vote, please?
Aye.
I'd like to second it. Step down and, um, state aye, and motion is approved to accept the approval of meetings for June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Could I have a discussion?
Aye.
Aye. How about, do I have another aye?
Oh, aye.
I do agree, and it's, I can't see from here, what time do we have, guys?
Seven forty-one.
Seven forty-one adjournment. Thank you, everyone, very much. Hope you enjoyed it.